Good evening. Good evening, everybody. We're going to begin the June 5 business meeting of the Wantagh Board of Education. We'll begin with a salute to the flag and a moment of silence for Joanne Fitzpatrick, mother of Joanne Gorman.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. B for communications to the Board of Education. Communications were received from Jennifer Russo. And C superintendent's report, Mr. McNamara.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight. I'm John McNamara, Superintendent of Schools. We appreciate you taking some time with us. Always like to start off with some good news. First, we'll start with our school budget being approved. Thank you to the school community overwhelmingly approving our school budget, you know, over seventy percent approval. So, thank you. We're excited about that. I look forward to a great year for next year. Also, congratulations to Laura Reese and Jennifer Pofetti on their reelection. They'll be sworn in for their next term at our reorganization meeting on July 1st. Like to do some student recognition to start. Once again, our music program, we have our students here. We had NISMAs majors just recently, and we just did outstanding. You know, we are so fortunate in our district to have just such an outstanding music program with outstanding music educators. I'm just continually impressed by our music department, the work they put in with our students and what they are able to achieve. We're really excited about their accomplishments in NISMAs majors, and we want to take some time to recognize all three performing groups tonight. There's a lot of you, but we wanted to, we felt it was important, it's such a significant accomplishment, so we wanted to start the top of our meeting tonight with that recognition. I'm going to invite our Director of Finding Performing Arts and Business Education, Kelly Jones, up to the microphone. She's going to introduce each group. We're going to do it group by group, so as you come up, we have a certificate for you we'd like to present. Then, we're going to ask you to come right up on stage and gather for that group, and then we'll do a group photo for that particular ensemble, and then we'll go to the next ensemble. So, I'm going to turn it right over to Kelly Jones, and we'll do some recognition.
Ah, great. Thank you so much. I just want to take a moment and do some recognitions and just kind of explain some, how impressive this is. I want to take a moment to recognize a group of students who have shown us what growth, dedication, and teamwork truly look like, and that's our String Ensemble, and I'd like to invite Mrs. Dela Monica up.
This year, they achieved something remarkable at NISMAs majors, and what makes this moment even more meaningful is knowing where they started. Honestly, this level of performance wouldn't have been possible even just a year ago, but through hard work, resilience, and a shared commitment to getting better every day, they've grown into truly an outstanding, outstanding ensemble. So, I want to take a moment to recognize and congratulate our String Ensemble on their outstanding performance at NISMAs majors, earning a gold, a silver, sorry, silver. This is no small accomplishment. NISMAs majors is one of the most rigorous and respected music evaluations, and earning a silver reflects a high level of musical skill, preparation, and discipline. Silver is a mark of quality, and it also reminds us that growth is ongoing, and what is achieved is impressive, and we're building toward that even more exciting days ahead. I want to thank our dedicated conductor, Mrs. Dela Monica, for believing in these students and pushing them to reach their potential, and I want to thank every family member who supported them along the way. So, to all the students in the String Ensemble, you did this, you earned this, and we are so incredibly proud of how far you've come and how bright your future is. Congratulations, String Ensemble.
I just want to add one more thing. I don't remember the last time that the orchestra here has gone to NISMAs majors. Do you remember, Mrs. Jones?
No, I don't.
So, this was the first time that I've brought a group, period. This is the first time the high school has had the orchestra go to NISMAs majors, so this is a really big deal for us, so thank you. Margaret Craig. Daniel Donahue. Elizabeth Kirchner. Colin McCann. Leila Saka. Leah Vagnone. Riley Wood. Adrian De Chavez. Lauren Fuhrer. Eva Mugavero. Emma Palmasano. Ally Reisert. Mia Spiteri. Avery Bogacki. Morgan Crespo. Reese McCarthy. Paige Miller. Skayanna Rothkopf. Rashad Banerjee. Evelyn Caputo. Madeline Chiapetta. Isabella Cicero. Joseph Pennella. Juliet Azeridi. Christopher Cosaglia. Anya Dennis. And Jack Goodwin.
Now, I want to take a moment to share the incredible accomplishment of our middle school Early Bird Chorus, and invite Ms. Cassidy up. Welcome to Ms. Cassidy. So, our Early Bird Chorus earned a rating of gold, and it's a big deal. The gold rating means that they didn't just sing the notes, they brought the music to life, and they did it under pressure in front of professional adjudicators with poise and pride. And for middle school students, this is, it's just incredible to see them go and present themselves in front of professional judges, so they were amazing on stage. But what's even more meaningful is the work behind the scenes, the early mornings, Early Bird Chorus, early mornings, the rehearsals, the focus, the teamwork, and the willingness to grow every day. I want to thank our amazing chorus director, Mrs. Cassidy, for guiding and inspiring these young musicians, and I want to thank the families who supported them behind the scenes. And to our orchestra, chorus students, we moved on. Orchest- chorus students, congratulations, chorus. Your hard work, your passion, and your united unity truly paid off, and we're proud of you, not just for the gold, but for the heart that you put into it. Congratulations, Early Bird Chorus.
The Early Bird students are truly just such a joy to teach, and I, going into this school year, wasn't anticipating on bringing any group to NISMAs majors, but when I saw how dedicated this group was, I know they deserved the opportunity, and they are just phenomenal students and performers, and I love spending my mornings with them. So, thank you to all my Early Bird kids. Sebastian Alisi. Oya Atalay. Isabella Boydrey. Ellie Bogar. Mairead Bogar. Olivia Casio. Sophia Kahamarca. Bella Clinton. Leah David. Rosalie Delacrochet. Miranda Fetter. Paul Felice. Angelina Friss. Diana Goncalves. Audrey Greisbeck. Victoria Guber. Charlotte Hammel. Charlie Hartman. James Hearns. Jacob Hite. Haley Higuera. Lucas Iacona. Celeste Jeffs. Madeline Jurgens. Maggie Kimball. Ethan Coogler. Mackenzie Lane. Madison Lane. Joseph Leoni. Isabel Laporen. Sophie Laporen. Christopher Laro. Elsie Lee. Amanda Lovelock. Elizabeth Luciano. Emily McHale. Sophia McManaman. Leah Myers. Adriana Nordquist. Grace Pack. Giada Petrillo. Leah Petrillo. Luca Pig- Luca Pignataro. Paige Riley. Daniel Rodriguez. Michael Rodriguez. Luke Rose. Mallory Ryan. Emma Sherman. Reagan Shiksker. Amalia Smith. Catherine Stavali. Leila Sumarak. Lucas Tardakoff. Jewel Thomas. Peyton Tilliston. Kaitlin Urban. Reese Vikari. Emma Walsh. And Christopher Waddell. Thank you again. Ella Tierney. Ella Tierney. My sweetheart. Wait, one more, one more, wait, wait. All right. And now to recognize our truly exceptional achievement of our Wind Ensemble, Mr. Villas, come on up.
Yes, yes, absolutely. At NISMAs majors, our Wind Ensemble earned a gold with distinction. To put this into perspective, a gold rating means excellence across the board, but with distinction is for groups who deliver an outstanding performance in all evaluated categories, which are tone, technique, interpretation, and musical expression. This accomplishment reflects far more than one day's performance. It's results of months of months of focused rehearsals, deep musical discipline, and a level of collaboration and commitment that highlights the ensemble's hard work and focus. To our student musicians, your dedication, your artistry, and your musicianship are absolutely remarkable. You brought professionalism, heart, and excellence to the stage, and we are so proud of you. And to our conductor, Mr. Villas, thank you for your passion, your vision, and your constant pursuit of excellence. And of course, to our families, thank you for supporting music education. It makes a lasting impact, as we all know. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Jones, for the kind words. Thank you Board of Education for this recognition, it's very special to us, and thank you to the upper administration for always being our supporters, we really do appreciate that. The running joke is that somewhere in a basement in Wantagh, all the students gather, and they try to figure out how to stress me out until the very last minute, right before we go into the festival, and they succeeded once again. I think I have one extra ulcer, but we almost didn't go, especially at this level, it's a very high level, and I'm so very, very, very proud of you. I could cry right now from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much for a remarkable performance, and thank you seniors for being such a special part of this ensemble this year. I hope you walk away with something special when you graduate. Thanks again.
Kaitlin Dillon. Rosemarie Letto. Sophie Haynes. Isabella Gugal. Skylar Mondelli. Olivia Scherer. Madison Rodriguez. Edward Correa Beas. Michael Muscenero. Nathan Healy. Ricky Boyko. Sean Tenoko. Adrian De Chavez. Gabriel Evitable. James Carney. Gregory Heim. Stephen Albano. Brendan O'Callaghan. Nicholas Boyko. Sean Rysland. Isabella Sclafani. Matthew Como. Davian Galdamis Marmol. Lea Gallegos. Aditya Pastricha. Ian Fraser. Kendall Copé. Sean Reynolds. Vincent Grogan. Ryan Leibach. Maximus Negliari. James Ambrosio. Madeline Gonzalez. Sophia Hilliard. Paul McHale. Matthew Riley. Logan Schro. Ben Wojcick. Brady Walken. Congratulations all.
All right, once again, congratulations to all of our students. Thank you so much for attending tonight, we really appreciate it. All right, just a couple of other recognitions for tonight as well. We are, I just wanted to give a thank you. Last week, we had students that attended the Challenger Games, the Nassau County Games for the Physically Challenged. It's coming. Yeah, it's coming. And I just wanted to, huge thank you to our Special Education Department for organizing that, our Special Education Parents and SEPTA for all their support of the event, and in particular, Dr. Marla Chance, who really takes the lead with that program. It's our second year participating, and it's just such an outstanding day, and such a great community day, you know, we have parents attending, we have staff, we have our students that are there, and I'd be remiss if I did not, you know, take a moment tonight to recognize, you know, what a great day it was for our students. Mr. Moran, I don't know if you want to add anything about the day? Mr. Moran was there for the day as well.
I've never seen so many smiles on so many students and parent faces throughout the entire day. Everybody had a really great time, and it was just something we look forward to continue doing year after year.
Great, so just a little round of applause, please, for Special Education Department of Staff and Dr. LaChance as well. All right, that's the one I wanted. All right. We also have a member of our staff that's retiring. We're going to be accepting momentarily a resignation for the purpose of retirement from one of our outstanding teacher aides at Wantagh Middle School. We, for the past twenty years, have been truly fortunate and blessed to have Sue McKenna as a member of our staff here. The work she has done with our students in our Special Education program has just been tremendous. You would be hard pressed to find anyone saying a negative word about Sue McKenna. She is certainly that kind of person. She just loves what she does, and that clearly comes across every single day that she's here. She informed me that she was going to have a new boss, which I believe is that beautiful granddaughter right there. So, I said to her, "Look, if it doesn't work out with the new boss, come on back," you know, "if she fires you for any reason." I don't think that'll be the case, though. So, I wanted to take a moment just to congratulate Sue, thank her for her ongoing dedication to our students, to our staff, for everything she's given to our district over the years. We've been blessed to have you, and just want to wish you all the best and enjoy all the time with that beautiful granddaughter. Once again, congratulations, Sue. All right, we're going to, just a couple of updates for me that I'd like to share with the community. One is on the topic of mascot. You know, we, I'd like to provide just a little bit of update, as I think most folks in the community are aware, we were currently in the process of some litigation with New York State over maintaining our Warrior nickname, and we had filed an appeal, the district had filed an appeal of a judge's decision back a couple of months ago, and we're kind of All right, we're going to, just a couple of updates from me that I'd like to share with the community. One is on the topic of mascot. You know, we, I'd like to provide just a little bit of update, as I think most folks in the community are aware. We were currently in the process of some litigation with New York State over maintaining our Warrior nickname, and we had filed an appeal, the district had filed an appeal of a judge's decision back a couple of months ago, and we're kind of waiting for that to go through the process. While that has been going on, we've also, you know, been aware of the U.S. Department of Education's intervention into the situation over the past week or so. We attended a press conference over at Massapequa with the Secretary of the Education Department, Lynda McMahon, and they're directing New York State to kind of walk back their regulation. So we'll wait and see what the outcome of that is as well. Also, in the meantime, we had applied for an extension for the implementation of the mascot regulation. As I think many folks are aware, that regulation goes into effect, we need to be compliant by that. We were supposed to be compliant by that June 30th of this year. We applied for an extension, and that extension was granted, and it was a full-year extension. So through June 30th of 2026, the New York State Education Department has granted us more time for implementation, so we do not have to be fully compliant until that point in time. So for the upcoming school year, for the '25-'26 school year, the district will continue to use the Warrior name as our mascot name for this upcoming school year, and then just continue to see how all those other pieces kind of play out. So that's where we currently stand. We'll continue to keep the community updated. The board has put together a letter that'll update the community. That will go out tomorrow, just about the extension that we received and where, you know, we currently are with that piece. So anything else from the board regarding that extension, or any questions for me?
I would just want to say thank you for all the work that you put in, and I think that the extension really gives us a little breathing room so that we can see how this all plays out, and thank you to Lynda McMahon for coming to see us. We were very grateful that Mr. Blakeman invited us, and Mr. Oates was there as well. So just thank you for all the work that you put in on this.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. All right, I also just wanted to provide an update for the board on the Beach Street property. Many folks in the community know this is the We Friends Building. That's a property that's owned by the district. We had a lease with that, with We Friends, for many years. It goes back, I believe, to late '70s, early '80s. That lease expired last year, and that building has been vacant since September, and we were really kind of spending this year considering some different options for that property. There's some pretty extensive costs that would be involved in renovating that building. It's an older building in need of much work, and at this point, in terms of uses for the district outside of leasing it to somebody else are limited for our own use. It's not large enough for UPK, it's not up to code, it's not, you know, for those types of programs outside of really office space. That's really all that can really determine it to be used for, and the investment into it is fairly large. So at this point, I think I would recommend to the board, holding a planning session to discuss those options related around it, including, you know, what it would be to renovate, potential sale of the building, all of those pieces, and just want to get some feedback from the board if that's the direction they wanted to head.
So we'll hold a planning session in the next few weeks, correct?
Correct, yeah. So set a planning session for the next few weeks, and we could go over those options and take a look, you know, what it would mean to sell the property, what it would mean to repair the property, that kind of thing.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
Could you just address if we ultimately went the route of potential sale, what that process would look like in terms of input from the community?
Yep.
And approval?
Yeah, sure. So it almost works in reverse of our bid process, right? So we would, ultimately, it ends in the voters approving a sale. So we would hire a realtor to market the property, they would show the property, they would then take bids on the property. Those bids would be brought back to the board for consideration, see which they would like to, if they would like to explore any of those. They would, they could request, you know, what the potential use would be, all those types of things. We would solicit all that information. Then the board ultimately would decide if they would like to sell it to one of those potential buyers, and if they did, then we would start to notice a public vote on that, and the community ultimately would approve or not approve the sale of the property to the potential buyer. So that kind of loosely is the outline of the process.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? All right, we are up to cellphone bans. Just to update the community, we had, New York State Education, I should restate that, the New York State Legislature took some action in terms of banning the use of cellphones in school, so we're currently taking a look at that. We put on the agenda for this evening, a first read of a potential policy around that. Currently, K-8, we are compliant with the regulation, and our high school team is taking a look at what that would look like at Wantah High School to implement that. Right now, in our middle school, students leave their phones in their lockers, students in elementary don't bring their cellphones to school, or if they do, they have to stay in a backpack away. So we would look to implement something similar at Wantah High School. So they're working on a plan for that, and we have an initial read of a potential policy for the board's consideration tonight. And then lastly for me, just an update on school meals. Also, part of the budget that New York State adopted just last month was the universal free breakfast and lunch for students, so that's something that we'll be looking to implement for next year in September as well. That's all students. We have a free and reduced lunch program now that's based on income and other factors that we take a look at to verify if a student is eligible. That would no longer be the case. All students would be eligible for the free lunch and breakfast program across the board. So that's a piece of this budget that was just approved by New York State just about a month ago. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Cassick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have the wrong glasses. Okay, we're going to continue on. D, Approval of Minutes. D1, Approval of Minutes, is there a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. E, Financials. E1, Financial Reports. E2, Budget Transfers, is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
F, Personnel. F1, Approval of Personnel Items, is there a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
G, Contractual and Other Authorizations. G1, Funding of Reserves 2024-25. G2, 2025-26 Real Property Tax Levy. G3, Special Education Tuition Agreements. G4, Health Services Agreement. G5, Closeout of Capital Project. And G6, Intimate Municipal Agreement. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
G7, Related Services Agreement. G8, Transportation Agreements. G9, Fire Alarm Services. G10, Donations. The Board of Education approves a donation from New York Life Foundation of two checks totaling $56 for the Forest Lake Elementary School. These checks represent donations made by individuals who participate in matching gifts program of the New York Life Giving Campaign. The Board of Education approves a donation from TD Bank for $1,000 for Wantah Warrior, the Wantah Warrior 9/11 Memorial 5K Run. The Board of Education approves a donation from BMW a Freeport Mini of $1,000 for the Wantah Warrior 9/11 Memorial 5K Run. The Board of Education approves a donation from Pete and Angela Luftig of $1,474 for the Wantah Warrior 9/11 Memorial 5K Run. The Board of Education approves a donation from Wantah SEPTA of $2,000 for the Wantah Warrior 9/11 Memorial 5K Run. The Board of Education approves a donation from the Wantah 6-12 Association of $7,500 for the Wantah Warrior 9/11 Memorial 5K Run. The Board of Education approves a donation from Northwell Health of $10,000 for the Wantah Warrior 9/11 Memorial 5K Run. The Board of Education approves a donation from the American Heart Association of $200 for the Wantah Middle School for Hoops for Hearts. The Board of Education approves a grant donation from Alliance Energy LLC of $500 to the Wantah Middle School. The Board of Education also approves a donation from the Forest Lake Elementary School PTA of $3,434 for an Assembly So Fun Game Show. We'd like to thank everybody for their very generous donations. G11, Disposal of Obsolete Textbooks and Books, is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
H, Unfinished Business, there is none. I, New Business. I1, Approval of Committees on Special Education and Preschool Education Recommendations. I2, Policy Revisions, is there a motion?
Move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
J, Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, to executive session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to our organizational reports. Student Government.
Hello, everyone. My name is Danny Doniu.
And my name is Isabella Cugal, and we are your student body presidents for the 2024-2025 school year.
With AP exams over, students are now preparing for the region's exams, and we wish them the best of luck. In regards to activities, there have been many exciting events within the school and many more to come. The senior class had their commitment day on May 30th, where they wore clothing that showcased their destination in the fall, whether that be their college, job, or branch of the military. Additionally, this past Monday, they had their senior sunrise event, where they went to the beach to watch the sunrise as a sort of full-circle moment. We hope that they have the best time at prom, and we can't wait to see all they accomplish in the future.
The junior awards ceremony will take place tomorrow, June 6th, where selected juniors will be recognized for their commitment to their academics and receive awards from different institutions. In regards to the sports field, our athletes have been excelling. Yesterday, the boys' lacrosse team won the Long Island Championship in a very exciting game. The boys' baseball team won the county championship last week, and the girls' lacrosse team were county championship finalists.
Next Monday, we will be holding our annual senior barbecue run by the student government. The senior class gets to enjoy one last meal in school altogether while signing each other's yearbooks and truly taking in their last moments of their high school years. Finally, with this being our last board meeting, Bella and I would like to thank the board for allowing us to speak at every meeting and give insight on what is happening within the student body over the course of the school year.
We know how special of an opportunity this is, that many other schools don't provide their students, so thank you for including us each meeting, and with that, we hope you all have a great summer. Thank you.
Isabella and Danny, we'd like to thank you from the board. Your monthly input has been amazing to all of us. We've truly enjoyed listening to you. Thank you so much for your service. Forest Lake PTA?
Hi, Chrissy Roth. I'm just representing Forest Lake for tonight. They don't have much to report. Their installation dinner is on Monday, the 16th. They had Field Day today, and that was a lot of fun for everyone, and the incoming 5th grade has the Kona truck coming after school on the 24th, and they want to say thank you to everyone for a great year. Thank you.
Mandalay PTA? Wantah L. PTA?
Good evening. Jen Schnitzer, Wantah Elementary PTA, as you know. June is here, and we're finishing strong. We're looking forward to celebrating our graduating 5th graders. As a PTA, we have watched them grow, and we'll be there to support them and their families as they embark on a new chapter in their lives. We wish them much success in middle school. Tonight, we have the Wantah Elementary Music Students and Family Night at the Long Island Ducks game, so I'm sure they're having a great time. It's a nice night for that, and we're excited for our Field Day tomorrow. It's going to be nice weather, I'm excited, so I was anxiously watching the weather. Buzz the Bee will make an appearance at our entry parades for both our Field Day sessions, and we look forward to a great day. With June comes Flag Day, where we will recognize our PTA Reflections participants and winners, as well as the recipients of our Wantah Elementary School Scholarship Awards. Our PTA End of Year Celebration will be on June 18th, where we will look forward to rounding out another great year and installing our 2025-26 board, as well as thanking all of our parents, the community, our teachers, our administrators, as well as our committee chairs and volunteers for all their hard work this year. Thank you to the board for your support, and we hope you enjoy the summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
6-12 Association?
Hi, I'm Mary Beth. I'm doing double duty tonight, so I'll do 6-12 and SEPTA. 6-12, we just recently had our installation dinner. Thank you to everyone who came. We wanted to thank all our outgoing and incoming board members, so congratulations to them. We donated $7,500 to the 9/11 Fund, which you just announced, and they gave $13,000 out in senior scholarships this year, and they want to wish everyone a wonderful summer. And then for SEPTA, I'm going to also say the games for the Physically Challenged was such a wonderful day. We were able to buy the shirts for the staff and the kids. SEPTA was able to purchase the shirts, so we really were happy. I was there, it was just an amazing day. The kids were so happy, the buddies were happy, the staff, just everyone. It was a wonderful day, so thank you for all your support on that. Our fundraiser, our annual fundraiser the night at the Reese's was May 10th, that was very successful. We were able to give out seven wonderful scholarships to very deserving seniors. We had our Friend of SEPTA Awards last night, which was a wonderful, wonderful night, honoring so many wonderful staff and community members in Wantah for all their wonderful things that they've done for our children, and we just want to thank everyone again. And we also donated $500. We paired with Tammy's Suites a couple of months ago for our spring fundraiser, and then one of our students in Ms. Dessens' class, Liam Bryce, also raised $500. So we gave $1,000 to NSA, National Suffolk Autism Society of America, who does a lot for, a lot of wonderful things for the autism community and families with disabilities. And I think that's it. And we also donated to the 9/11, we're happy to donate again to the 9/11 Fund. We want to also thank the board and thank the administration and all the building administration and teachers and staff for a wonderful year. We look forward to our collaborating next year with you all, and have a great summer.
Thank you.
Me too.
PTA Council?
Hello, Chrissy Roth up again, and on behalf of myself and my co-president Laura Grassi, we just want to thank everyone for their support for all of our PTAs. Every PTA rocked it this year, and we're so proud of everyone. With everyone's hard work and with our staff volleyball game, we were able to give out $8,000 to our seniors for scholarships, and we're looking forward to another successful year next year. Our board is staying the same. Thank you to the board, and thank you to admin for all the work that you do. Have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Sports Booster Club? Performing Arts Booster Club?
Good evening. I'm Nicole Buffalo. I'm representing Wantah Performing Arts Booster Club this evening. The WPABC continues to have concessions presence at district performing arts concerts and performances. Highlights since the last meeting include the High School Honors and General Concert and the Middle School Orchestra and Band Concerts. Refreshments were supplied to marching band at the Memorial Day Parade. The WPABC supported the 8th Grade Broadway Experience production of their original musical, Beyond the Gates, with a cast board, kisses for the cast, and a full lobby presence. Today, the Booster Club provided both achievement certificates and medals at the piano recital for students completing Mrs. Delmonico's Intro to Piano Course. And as the WPABC rounds out its first official full school year as an organization, we are happy to share that we will be awarding and/or contributing to 20 scholarships for our seniors, which will be announced at next week's Performing Arts Awards Event. We look forward to providing support for the remainder of the concert schedule and to band at graduation, and we have announced our 2025-2026 Executive Board, including myself and Joanna Burlu as incoming co-presidents, and all are looking forward as incoming co-presidents, and all are looking forward to further supporting our performing arts students. Thank you to the board, administration, and staff for collaborating with us this year.
Thank you. The Wanta Foundation?
I just want to extend a huge thank you to all of our PTA groups. You know, you just heard about all the scholarships and all the events. Each and every year, just tremendous support from them. The amount of scholarships, you know, we just had the Senior Award Night, and just the amount of scholarship money that our students benefit from, from all the hard work that our PTAs do, is greatly appreciated. And then particularly at this time of year, these folks are out every night at a different event and supporting that event in various ways, so just a huge thank you to our PTAs.
Now we'll move on to our public comments. Anybody would like to come to the microphone?
Good evening. Thank you for using, let me allow this platform for me to speak. I know I've been before you numerous times, but I'm here once again to basically express my general deep concerns into having this soccer club donate $600,000 for a conditional use of the high school main athletic field. I have offered to fundraise without any conditions for these lights. I know Forest Lake is currently underway and doing quite well for their field, and again, I'd be more than happy to help that. So I'd like to know if this is a possibility. I had mentioned it with no return on that question. I just feel a turn it, this would be a great alternative instead of the donation. I believe it would restore, renow, and renew the integrity of the Board of Education and the high school and the middle school and the rest of the community if we would be able to do it in-house without conditional use of our fields. It kind of feels like a bribe to me. I know you guys receive many donations, and it's wonderful. You know, I was on the board PTA for a while when my children were in, and I know the donations you do receive, but a donation is a donation. It's not conditional. And if this club is allowed and or will be allowed to have this, these lights built, we have a couple of questions. Who is going to absorb the wear and tear of the field? Is that the board of ed? Are they going to give you like a yearly stipend for anything that is damaged or broken or worn? Security. Who will be hosting that insecurity? Is that their own security? Will the board of ed or the Wanta School District be responsible for any security around these? Who will absorb any cost maintenance and the burden for any insurance liability? Do they have insurance that were to cover anything? Do you guys have any underlying, like, is there a cap? And will you have to have like some underwriting insurance waiver to cover any injury for the And if the security, I forgot this one, if the security is provided by the school, does the soccer club pay for that security? A really big one to me is will there be a very comprehensive scheduled supply to the outlining community, schedules of games, practices? Because basically, we're kind of present in our own house, and it's going to be worse. Entertaining is sketchy. I have no idea when and if, you know, I had expressed last time where I've had people over during the summer, there's people on the bleachers, aluminum bats running up and down. It's embarrassing, so some of those things you can't predict, I get it, but the things that you can predict and the things that you are aware of, whatever contract that you may have with them. I would really like to be supplied with any list of the games, any practices, and will the other clubs that currently utilize the fields, will they be bumped in any way? Will they be affected? So now we have lacrosse clubs, we have, I know there's baseball, that's the interior, we have football, now we're going to have a soccer club, plus games for the middle school and the high school. Sounds like a lot. I'm not quite sure how that will affect everybody. I know that we have spoken about this, and you guys have said that you're working on it, you're planning it. I haven't heard. My question is, when will we know? I know it's a work in progress, and if so, how much time will we have to know before these lights were to be installed? How long does it take? I know that the school or the district, pardon me, was awarded $600,000 in state aid. I'm sure that goes to various programs that you have here, and hopefully about another $400,000 of this Warrior logo thing. So that's like a million dollars. Is there any way any of that money could be put into installing the lights as well other than a conditional use of a donation? Because if you're doing a donation and it's conditional, it's more like a bribe, or you're paying somebody to use it. And with, in closing, it had been brought to my attention that one of the board members had reached out to this club in wishing and solicited this idea for the club to make this offer. So I, again, third time addressing this, hope that these things will be addressed and answered, and whatever shape or form would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Hello. I'm Maureen O'Donnell. I know you all know who I am. Oh, sure. So you were saying about updating every Wanta community about other things. So when are the Daffodil Lane people going to be updated about this whole situation? That's one thing we keep asking, and we really don't know how we're going to find out about this. Like, is it, like, we were hoping we'd come here tonight, and you're going to say, okay, it's happening? Like, I mean, we don't want it to happen, but we want to know what's happening. So don't get why or how we get this answer. That's why we're here? And if it does happen, who do we contact when there is a situation that arises? Because we're definitely expecting situations to arise. So we're going to need the contact information of whoever this owner is. And one of the things I wanted to know is, because I actually just started following them on Instagram to see like what they're about, they travel all over the world or whatever. They travel state to state. I don't even know where they travel, but I know they travel a lot. How come they can't afford their own stadium or whatever? Why do they have to come here to this tiny little area where there's no parking, there's no outside bathrooms or anything like that, that they're going to be just basically peeing behind the bleachers by the neighbors? You know, you're not going to have the school open at night when they're going to be here. And when is this expected to start taking place? Is it going to be next week when school's over, July? You know, there's questions we want to know. And also, how long is this contract that you're going to sign for this donation going to last? Is it going to be a year? Is it going to be forever? You know, there's just, it really doesn't make sense to me that we come here and ask these questions because this is affecting our lives, and it will. If these lights are going to be on and these outside organizations are coming to play games till 10 o'clock at night, my backyard is right there, all of us that are here tonight, none of us are happy about it. We want answers, so everyone looks and nods, but that's it. So we're just not sure.
Ms. O'Donnell, you know, we listen and then we'll respond after the public commentary.
Tonight?
Yeah, we respond every night.
I've never heard a response.
We respond every time. We don't have the final answer.
But you're saying you don't have it, but I know you do.
We don't.
Okay, so if it's supposed to start, like, for the summer, how do you not have an answer? You know, and really?
Why are you saying it's starting this summer?
What's that?
Why are you saying it's starting this summer?
Because that's what I think is happening, because they started drilling behind our houses months ago, and we knew nothing about it. What was that?
Please finish with your questions. We can answer all of them afterwards.
Okay, so anyway, yeah, when they started drilling, we're assuming that's, they're getting ready to do something, and that was months ago, and we knew nothing about it. Nobody, you know, you're saying you want to let the community know about things, but Daffodil Lane, keep quiet, because we're going to do what we want, and we're not going to say a word. So anyway, this is the last meeting, so that's it.
Good evening, everybody. I myself am an executive board member of a local 100 and local 501, 17 years, that we represent over 21,000 people. So I kind of know both sides of the table here, but the young lady at the end of the table stated what kind of wonderful sports teams we had and what the accomplishments were, and all that was done without a light, not one single light. Okay, and now what do you guys, what do you people want to do? You just want to play your own agenda? You want to bring in your lights? The word donation in a dictionary, I'm going to read it, yous are all educated, but let me just read it to you anyway. Donation is something given to charity, especially money, also actions given, carpets, chairs, et cetera, with nothing expected in return. If you have to give time to this soccer team that one of your children played for, that's a bribe, okay? If anyone related up on this table has a child, a grandchild, a nephew, a niece, and solicited that soccer team, a donation is something given with nothing expected or wanted in return. Giving a soccer team time is paying them off for their money to let them play on that field. So I don't want to hear the word donation from anybody, because it's not the word donation. That's number one. Number two, I hope we have a good lawyers team, because if anything happens to anyone's properties, there will be lawsuits filed. It's not a threat, it's a promise. Okay? So look at me all yous want, have your attitude, whatever. I'm not a nice person, because like I said, I'm on that side of the table, and I know what it's like to represent a large group of people, not a school district. I'm talking to mass transit airlines divisions. I grieve, I go to, I do arbitrations. I have done it all for 20 years. This is nothing but the agenda of the eight to 10 people I see here, because it was voted down previously. The town voted down to not put new air conditioning, new windows in, because that you guys tried to backdoor it in the original time on the vote. And you don't care what the town wants. You don't care what's good for the school district. You don't care what the town wants. You care about your own agenda. What you remind me of is a lower level politician that we deal with in Washington, DC. Okay? That's what I feel. You're nothing less than the lower level, and I don't mean you're a low at all, but you're lower level than a senator. You're out for your own agenda, your own, what's it called? I'm so fit to be tied right now. Our houses are the largest purchase of our lives, and now we're going to have people parking. We deal with the parking BS all season long, both semesters. Now we're going to have to deal with it because your soccer team, your son wants to play on the soccer team that you solicited a team? This is a crock, is what it is. And maybe the rest of the town doesn't feel this way. This is Wanta High School football field. It's not Wanta Park. We have Wanta Park down below Merrick Road. That's what you're turning this into. You're turning this into a park. You're ruining people's property values? You're putting people at risk? The traffic alone down that block from our own students and parents, I hate to say parents, that blow those stop signs constantly because they don't want to go the extra quarter mile up to Wanta Avenue and down to Belto is a disgrace. And as you can see, I don't have a problem talking, and I'm not low toned, and I'm not scared of anything or anybody. So I'm telling you the way we all feel, I just kind of have the cahoots to say it and do it. Okay? One of you stay by my house or Maureen's house on any given day and watch how many people blow that stop sign. We call the cops, they come by, you don't care. It's not your block. Bottom line, not one of yous live on that block. Every Saturday morning, I work my ass off, pardon my French. I go to work at 3:00 in the morning. I work a 15, 16-hour day like everybody else. I can't sleep on Saturdays. Whatever high school team is playing, what rap music is playing, what this music is playing, that's my only night I can sleep. And now you're bringing soccer teams and who else there at night? This is unacceptable. It really is unacceptable. You are just out for your own agenda because this was not passed previously. And the stink that's written all over it because somebody's child is on that team is an utter disgrace. That has bribe written all over it. It's disgusting. That's how it is. It's disgusting. The country voted down this BS. Everyone is sick and tired of politicians worrying about their own agenda. You people are bored. Worry about the town, worry about the school district and what's good for the town and the school district, not for your own agenda and whoever's kid is going to play soccer. And if that's the case, I hope the kid never gets a scholarship. Have a nice day.
Hi. Frank Messina, I also live around the corner. I'm on Rose, not Daffodil. First of all, I want to thank you for the continued fight for our name, the Warrior name, but I noticed that you didn't mention the logo, so I was just wondering what, if that's also included, excuse me, in the fight. Congratulations to the board members who were reelected, and also congratulations on a great year. I do have a few questions, and I apologize if I repeat some things that were said. I'm getting old and I'm forgetting everything. As you can see, usually I wing this. I'm writing stuff down now, so, and I have glasses. So in the original proposal for the lights and upgrades, it stated that the field would be only used for Wanta teams and affiliates of Wanta. This soccer club, will they become a part of the Wanta community? Now that they're teamed up with, I think, a larger organization that is worldwide, will they be, I guess, like if you subcontract out, will they be using, will other teams not, under that original agreement, be, have access to the field? And what someone also said, will Wanta teams have priority over this soccer club? Again, I do have to agree, you know, we live every day with the, you know, the traffic and the high school kids and the teachers and the parents going through that stop sign. My kids, when they were little, were at that bus stop every day, and I can't tell you how many arguments I had with people who blew the stop sign, right, and almost really, almost, you know, jumping the curb at times. It's pretty dangerous. Called the cops, they say call the school, school says call the cops, so. As you can see, it's frustrating. And yes, the summer is, we like, it is nice and quiet over there in the summer, and we get it, you know, we live by a school. get it, you know, we live by a school. I'll never make that mistake ever again, but there are positives. I love when we hear the graduation ceremony from our yard and our neighbor's child graduates, and we all shoot it, blow air horns, you know, we're a family. That street, especially Rose Lane and Daffodil Lane, we're a very tight-knit family. Again, I believe this was brought up, so I can apologize for repeating myself, but who did approach this, who approached who with this soccer club quote-unquote "donation"? Because I won't call it a donation either. Was it the board who approached them or did they approach us? So I just want some clarification on that. Also, will they have access to the school bathrooms? Will, and who's responsible for that if they do? My daughter told me there is an outside bathroom that I'm not familiar with, but will our security guards be there to open up the doors for them, to give them access? Who will be cleaning it? Who will be paying the security guards? I'm assuming it would be overtime since it's not going to be during school hours. And yes, will they have access to the speaker system? Because that is a concern. I work weekends, so I'm not affected by it, but I do have Tuesdays off, and for some reason, they love band practice at 9:00 in the morning, and that's my only morning to sleep. So maybe we can move band practice a little later, like 10:30, 11:30? That'd be great. And the other concern, obviously, is when there is a football game, there is a lot of overspill with parking on our streets and there's a lot of littering. There's a lot of parking on the crosswalk, hydrants, driveways. Will this soccer club and their families and guests, will they be parking on our streets? We don't know who's coming into the community. Normally, during school hours or non-school, those three or four streets behind the school, if you don't live there, we know which cars are not supposed to be there. So we're familiar with, oh, you know, we know whose cars are there at night. So when a car comes down the street at a weird hour, we're like, well, they're not supposed to be here because the gates closed, they know the school. So we just have some concerns. Listen, I know this is going to happen, whether I like it or not, there's nothing I can do about it, but it's just, we just, we have concerns. And honestly, you know, yeah, we're taxpayers, and, you know, I love this community, and I don't want to see it be turned into a mess. I take a lot of pride in my property. I take a lot, I mean, we all keep it clean. And again, dealing with the students who just throw their lunch garbage everywhere, I get it, they're kids, but when we have football games, like I said, and there's other towns coming here, they don't care. It's not their town. So, again, you know, we just have concerns, and, you know, I know you're going to address the now, so I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Have a great summer.
Thank you.
This is from the Town of Hempstead audience. Sorry, a little nervous, didn't say that right. So basically, it's addressing the likelihood and impact as such facilities on surrounding neighborhood. It would likely include regulations regarding noise, lighting, parking, and while assuring the field doesn't negatively affect property values, alter the neighborhood's essential character, and well as prohibiting the use of field by non-residents. Here is a more detailed breakdown. It might limit the use of the field to residents and guests of a multifamily dwelling or specific organizations with proper permits to prevent it from becoming a public nuisance. It could prohibit the field from being visible to significant extent from adjoining residential properties or from interfering with use of enjoyment of those properties. Other considerations, adequate parking facilities and field's property, ensuring that this doesn't overwhelm surrounding streets. It could also include regulations regarding traffic flow and pedestrian safety during gains. And the impact on the property values and neighborhood character. The audience would likely aim to prevent the football field from negatively impacting and to ensure the significance of the essential character, such as maintaining a balance between residence and recreational use. Noise and light pollution. It might regularly intensity and direction of lighting of the field to prevent glare and adjacent properties. It may likely, with, excuse me, likely limit noise levels from the field, especially during certain hours, to minimize disruption to nearby residents. It also may require adequate parking facilities on the field's property, ensuring it doesn't overwhelm and interfering with the use enjoyment of other properties. Other considerations, drainage, landscaping, refusal, disposal, other matters that could affect the public health, safety, and general welfare. I mean, just reading this on how affected we already are. This past Sunday, I mean, I have lists, but we'll go back to, like, we'll just do the last three weeks. Lacrosse, taking lacrosse work and practicing against the bleachers. Do you know what that sounds like? With a continuous whap-whap of a lacrosse ball against the steel structure? Never mind it's damaging it. I can't, I don't think that that structure was built to sustain that. You have people at like 5:30 in the morning, now the sun getting their exercise, up and down that. Okay? You have, so you have a night game, right? There's a lot of, all the clubs were there. They leave a lot of garbage. 7:00 in the morning, there's your staff, up and down those. So not that we have it all night, it's there at 7:00 in the morning. And there they are, up and down, yelling to each other, talking to each other. It's great to communicate, but you have to realize that there are people that are so impacted by this and our quality of life. I'm not just here because I have nothing better to do but give you guys a hard time. I don't think you realize it. I have invited you all over to, please listen, what it's like. No one's taken me off of my offer. I will continue to invite yous all over to see exactly what it's like. If you want me to livestream it for yous and you feel that's more convenient, I will do that as well. But something's got to give here, and you've got to respect your neighbors. This isn't just about the lights anymore. This is bigger. Okay? And you guys have to do the right thing. And let me fundraise and keep the integrity of the board because this is nowhere to live. During the fall or spring, when it's not nice out, they're barbecuing under the bleachers with music. Okay? So that's like reverbing right back into my house. Do I call you every time that there is an issue to make you guys understand this more? I don't want to be that person. There's certain things that you deal with, okay? But it has gotten to the point where there's no, there's just no care. There's just no respect, and it has to stop. I pay my taxes just as much as the rest of the town. So why do I and our community have to absorb or that block have to absorb for everybody else? It's not right.
Also, I'd like to state, when I moved into my home 30 years ago, I did my homework. Only three buses were allowed to go down that block, and they swore on a stack of Bible they would never go past that. Well, if anyone wanted to take up Diane or my offer to come to our house in the morning or the afternoon, there's about 19 to 20 buses that go up and down that block. So it's not like if anyone in the town, I've heard, oh, well, you should look into where you go. We've done all that. There were little tiny wooden bleachers when we moved in, not big hairy crazy metal ones. So we did all due diligence. Now, somebody who's looking to retire, like myself, I'm going to have to pick and choose when I sell my house. Should I call you up and find out what the schedule is so I make sure that the people don't see the chaos in their backyard? That I got to screw them? This is not the right thing to do. It's not Wantaw Park. I'm going to say it again, I'm going to be repetitive. It's Wantaw High School football field. And I should also say, I mean, I grew up and was raised, I'm a Seaford Viking graduate. You guys were my arch enemy. I moved one mile from my childhood home. I've been here for 30 years. We all love this community. We don't love this. We do not like it at all. You know, and some of yous are looking at me, and like I said, I'm a pretty, I've done this for many years. Some don't want to look at us, some are looking at me like, eh, I just wish this guy would shut the hell up, whatever it is, it is. There's a reason, if you're asked to come and look at something and nobody shows up, you know why you don't show up? Because you know what the person's saying is true. If Diane's invited you over and over and over and over again, and you fail to come over, the reason is, is because you know what she's telling you is true. Otherwise, you would come. It's pretty simple. And I'm going to go back to the fact that somebody on this board's child, nephew, cousin, whoever's on that team, it stinks. That has got such a rotten smell to it. It's disturbing, is what it is. Also, I have fixed that fence in my backyard 1,000 times. I have seven broken windows on my Florida room. Alls I keep doing is repairing it. Alls I keep doing is throwing lacrosse balls over. Alls I keep doing is throwing footballs over. And now we're going to have all kinds of more sports. I just put a vinyl fence up. I just spent $2,000 because I'm sick of that fence that the school owns. If you guys know, if you've seen it, I have tied that fence up 100 times, and it just keeps breaking and breaking. Now I don't care about it, and I just put a vinyl fence in front of it. I mean, we love the community, we love the town, it's one of the best towns, it's one of the best school districts. Do what's right for the school district and the town, not anyone's personal agenda. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. We're going to close the public comment.
All right, so you know what else? We'll close the public comment period. Thank you for sharing your concerns, as always. I'll address the non, I think there was a couple of non-light-related issues first. Mr. Messina, I think you were asking about the mascot. As far as the lawsuit goes, that was for the Warrior Name, not for the logo. That's what, you know, going back to 2023, that was the direction that we went in, and it was an attempt to really negotiate with the State Education Department to acknowledge some may find the logo offensive. Community felt strongly about the name, so that was the direction that we went in. So that, a lot of the efforts have been put there, including, you know, initially contacting the state to try to negotiate that, the lawsuit, you know, inclusive of that piece. So that's, just to make that distinction, I think you had asked about that.
Can I just, I'm sorry?
Yep.
But if it should happen that the logo, if it's, if this regulation is found, if they decide that they're going to get rid of the regulation, we do not have to get rid of the logo then?
Correct. Yep.
So we don't give up the right if they deem that it's not?
Correct.
Holdable.
Yep. All right, so field lights. So the reason why there's nothing to report on field lights is because we don't, we don't have, have not entered into an agreement with a soccer club. We have had discussions with the soccer club. That is all still in process. So we wanted, if and when that happens, we want it to be a benefit to the school and to the community, and that's really what the process we're currently engaged with is all about. So there's, the reason why there's nothing to report on because nothing has been entered into. The district is talking to the soccer club about what that potentially could look like, but there's some hurdles there, right? One is, we don't want to do anything that would impact our current use of the fields. There's no intent for any individual organization that is currently using our fields to have any loss of that time. That, right now, what we're talking about is time where the fields aren't used, right? Because there are no lights on the field. So that's what we're currently talking about to see if it makes sense. The, and I don't want to speak for the board, but I know at the time, when the soccer club first approached the district about this, it was, you know, almost, it would be financially irresponsible of the district not to discuss with something that, something like this, that someone was willing to make such a sizable donation to the school district. We listened, we gave you time to speak, and now I'm going to respond to that, so I'd just appreciate if you'd held your comments. So that was the approach at the time. And as I've shared, I know with Diane, and I've shared with Mrs. O'Donnell multiple times, I would love to provide you with some of those things that you're asking for in terms of details. I just can't because there's nothing to report, there hasn't been an agreement entered into. All of the points that you're raising in terms of, you ask questions about insurance, right? All those things. We have facilities use policies that guide that. Anybody that uses our facilities is required to have insurance that's adequate. That's something that we, that would be part of any type of agreement or facilities use agreement that was entered into. You asked about bathrooms. We have exterior bathrooms on Wantaw High School that if that was something that we were going to move in that direction, that they would have access to. But typically, things like PA systems and those that we, people that use our fields don't have access to that, and I'm sure that would continue as well. You had asked about, I don't know where this concept is coming from, and I found it insulting, this insinuation that there's a, some kind of bribe with some member that's sitting here, having someone that's connected to that club. That's, there's no truth in that, and that's-
100%. I'm sorry. You said the board? Anybody on this board have any family member, any relative, any friend that they, you know, anybody, grandchild, anybody? Keep, please do.
And then many of the other issues I know that were raised were the nuisance-related issues that, look, I completely appreciate, you know, I know that being a neighbor of a school, of a high school, a busy high school at that is not easy. So there are certainly many nuisance-related issues that come along with that, and I, the point is not lost on me or the board, that when you extend the use of a field, that extends the use of those nuisance-related items that go along with that. And of course, we would work with any organization that is using our facility to try to minimize that disruption as much as possible. So I understand the frustration in terms of what does an agreement look like, but I just am limited in what I can say because we're still actively exploring and discussing those things, and nothing has been determined or finalized. I know you asked the question of when is it happening, and you expected something tonight, apparently, at our June meeting for that, but I just don't have anything to report to you because there's nothing done. If we got to a point where we were ready to enter into an agreement, then we could report on that and what that would look like, but we're not at that point currently. I'm just looking to see if there was any other points raised.
So, question was just about parking? I think, I want to speak for everybody, but one of the things that we've talked about is that they can only park in the school parking lots. It's something that we would be looking for with them. Again, we can't say what they would agree to. That's something we are looking for and something that we've discussed. So in terms of parking, again, we don't have an agreement, can't say that is a definitive piece of information. Also, someone asked about additional state aid.
Yeah, so there was, at some point, something raised in terms of state aid. The largest driver of state aid for us is something called foundation aid. That's how, the vast majority of the dollars that most districts receive. Our state aid for next year is flat. There's no increase in that area. There are two other areas that we did see some increases in. One is our building aid. Building aid is money that we get back when we do work on our facilities. We file those projects with the State Education Department, and then when they're completed, we file the completion reports, and then- we file the completion reports, and then there's an aid, some aid that starts to come back on that. So for example, if we spent $200,000 renovating a science room, as we did, we then file that, and then money starts to come back from those projects. So some of the work that we've done over the past couple of years has, is, is starting to come back to us in that form. So we do have some building aid that's starting to come back. So that makes up a portion of our increase for next year as well as BOSI's aid. Significant portion of our overall state aid increase is a result of a project that we did through Nassau BOSI's. We partner with them with, for certain projects for savings. And we did a large project with them this year. It was a PA system in all of our school buildings, high school, middle school, and all three elementary schools. We had an antiquated system in, in all five buildings. We did a large $1.2 million project to renovate those. That was part of the capital projects that were approved in last year's budget. And we now get aid back on those projects, which is approximately about $400,000. So those are the only increases, our foundation aid. And I believe there's a million dollar number mentioned that, that just was inaccurate.
Any questions? I think, could you talk just a little bit about how security works at the schools currently? Because I think there's a lot of questions about security related to that.
Yeah, so when, when we have outside organizations use our facilities, they police their events. That's, that's what we do. We have our regular security on, and then they are responsible for policing their events. Part of the facilities use agreement they, they sign for with us is, is to, to manage their events as well.
I, I would just add a couple of things. There was a comment made about barbecues under the bleachers, which obviously would be concerning if you could share any information on that after the meeting. I think you mentioned a Town of Hempstead ordinance that you were referring to. If you want to share that, take a look at it. I'm not sure what you're referring to. Did we have any others? I'm sorry, there was a lot, so I was trying to keep track as much as I could. I think one question, because it's come up a few times, I would address is just wear and tear on the field. Of course, that would mean more wear and tear. Maureen, I think you and I spoke specifically, and I told you directly, of course, there's more wear and tear that would be on the district. There's not a specific answer as to how much more wear and tear and when that would be, but if, it would certainly mean that the life of the field is a little bit less, and so it would have to be replaced sooner. But couldn't give a specific time period because that would depend on how much wear and tear. Is there anything else?
So we have a...
If you have questions, you can come up after we have the closing meeting, and then you can come back and we can have a conversation.